Okay, I'll call the special meeting of the city council to order Tuesday, February the 20th, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. We have three items on the agenda to have a workshop and discussion over this morning. Item number one is Parks and Recreation Programs and Activities Presentation. Ms. Ashley, I presume you have this?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and Council, usually I say good evening, so I know y'all received this PowerPoint on Friday, and you might have noticed that it's pretty long. I anticipate each slide taking about a minute or two, so I hope y'all have plenty of time this morning. Just kidding. No, I'm actually gonna fly through them really quick, but if you do have questions, feel free to stop me. A lot of them are pictures.
And actually, I think Mr. McDaniel and I talked about this yesterday. If we could keep our questions kind of logged in and wait till the end of the presentation, I think we'll get through this in a timely manner today, unless there's something we can go forget.
Perfect. Okay. So essentially, our mission statement is to provide safe, diverse, quality activities and programs for our visitors and our citizens. We have six different divisions, seven if you count our interim Main Street. Here's a photo of our staff. We're very small. We have about 30 staff members here, and then our leadership team is a photo of us. We're missing a couple of our newer faces, Shane and Josh, but essentially, that's us as a department. Our organizational chart, I think you may have seen this before, we're very lateral. We have the six different divisions that are reporting to me. We have our aquatics recreation on the left, we have our Kerbal Shriner Park in the brown, we have Parks Maintenance, which is our biggest division, and then we have Sports Complex in the orange, and our Parks Office staff in the purple. So Parks and Recreation, and as I like to say, and miscellaneous, also known as the Fund Department, we do a lot more than typically what you would think. Here's kind of a little bullet list of just kind of random stuff that we do. Obviously, we have all the divisions, but we do things like the right-of-way mowing, we do the building custodial for city buildings, we do all the building maintenance for city buildings, which is about 40 buildings. We do, we mow around the I-10 sign, we take care of that, we do special projects, we do construction, we do commemorative programs, we have about 30 license agreements, contracts that we work with, and obviously, we have customer service skills because we work with the customers on a daily basis. Okay, Kerbal Shriner Park. This is our largest park that we have. It's home to our Parks and Recreation Department offices. This division includes seven staff, there's four field staff and three office staff. This office processes roughly around 15,000 reservations per year. This is KSP reservations, this is park rentals, this is program activities. Anything that we do goes through this office. This park and office is open seven days a week, and they only shut down for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day. We have a park host program, which is a volunteer program, and I think that's about it on kind of the overview. And this park actually does exceed their expenditures in their revenue. Last fiscal year, we brought in $505,000 in revenue, which is about $47,000 higher than our last fiscal year. I know y'all saw this presentation, too, we're gonna have the answers to this. So two amenities that were originally planned for this park a long time ago, where it was built in the '30s, was a polo grounds and an amusement park, and I'm assuming those did not make it because of funding. Here's an overview of the park itself. As you can see, Banderas Highway splits the park into two. We have the riverside, which is the part on the right, and then the hillside, which is the larger part on the left, that has the majority of the RV loops and some of our mini cabins and all of our trails. We have our ranch house. This is a three-bedroom, two-bath house. It sleeps eight. It's $190 plus tax to rent. Here's a couple more pictures of it. And I included a lot of pictures. I wasn't sure how many of y'all are familiar with our actual amenities, so I wanted you to see what they look like. This is a picture of our kitchen, a living room, hallway area, the bedrooms. And then we also have this bunk house, which we renovated a couple of years ago to provide a supplemental rental facility for families that needed more basically sleeping space. So it sleeps six, and our staff, another fun fact, is actually, they made these bunk beds out of cedar trees that were harvested from the park, which I think is pretty cool. We also have one park cabin. It's essentially one big kind of a loft area. The interior, there's the, there we go, the, there's the bedding space, there's a couch, a small kitchenette, and it does have a full-size bathroom shower as well. We have mini cabins, we have 23 of them. They sleep four. There we go. There's a picture of one on the riverside. We have three loops throughout the park, we have eight on the riverside, and we have 15 on the hillside, and there are group restrooms nearby. They do not have restrooms in them. They have two sets of twin bunk beds, they have a window unit, so it's AC or heat, depending on the season, and a table and chairs as well. We have our group recreation hall that folks can rent out for their activities as well. It's 300 a night, plus $100 deposit, has a capacity for 100 people. And here's the inside of it. As you can see, it's a pretty dated facility. It hasn't seen major upgrades or updates since, and this is something that we'll be dropping in our business plan eventually to try to get some funding to upgrade this facility to encourage more use out of it. Our dining hall is on the hillside of the park. It's 145 a night. And this is a screened facility. As you can see, there's no HVAC, but it does have the capacity for about 100 people, and it's located inside one of our mini cabin loops, which a lot of big family reunions or whatnot, they come and rent out those, and then they utilize this facility for the group meals. We have our amphitheater on the riverside. It's 100 or it's 25 if you rent it with the rec hall. This is home to some of our Movies in the Park series that we have. Has a capacity of about 220 people. We have our TP, which is built by an Eagle Scout project. It's more of a photo op, kind of a fun thing to look in, kind of look inside and play, but you can rent it, and it does get a little bit of rental use. Deerfield Loop, one of our RV sites, is a 30 amp full hookup site. It's on the hillside of the park, and this site is 26 per month. There's also monthly rates from October through February. We have the Con Loop, it's another 30 amp site. This is on the riverside. Again, $26 a night, and it's a pull-through RV sites as well. Sycamore Circle, this is one of our most popular sites. It's on the river, and it's popular because it's a 50 amp site. This is the only loop that we have to accommodate the bigger RVs, and we are starting to see a trend in the RV industry. They're getting bigger, and we are gonna eventually need to upgrade our 30 amp sites to 50 amps, so you'll see us asking for that eventually as well. That's one of our most popular loops. We have Mountain View Loop. This is a 30 amp water electric. You can pull in little RVs here, but we mainly see tents and those kind of activities in this loop, because they have electric and they have water access as well. And of course, we have primitive tent sites on both sides of the park. This is a picture of the riverside. Here's a picture of a little bit more activity. We have about seven and a half miles of hike and bike trail on the hillside of the park as well, and then we have the connection, the trailhead on the River Trail on the riverside of the park. And this is an overlook view from the Yellow Trail, which is, I think, is a very pretty view. We have our bow hunt at the end of each year. It's a program that actually the Texas Parks and Wildlife sponsors, and then we host the thistle, we actually host the hunt, and we run it. We bring in about 3,200 in revenue from this event, and then we harvested a total of 11 deer this past time. Couple pictures of our wildlife in the park, and just a couple of use pictures. We have the day use area by the river. As you can tell, the spring and summer are our peak seasons. We have folks that come in for day use. We generate about 30,000 a year in day use fees for people that come in just for the day. Grill, rent kayaks. We have a butterfly garden, which is managed completely by volunteers. It's a really neat amenity. It's more of a seasonal amenity, depending on when the butterflies are out and about, and when everything, the flora and fauna is blooming, but it's another nice amenity for us to have. We have volleyball courts, we have basketball courts. We have, as I said, the River Trail, the trailhead there. We have a seasonal kayak concessionaire that rents kayaks, paddleboards, canoes, and we have a playground, and that's Kerbal Shriner Park. Parks Maintenance, it's our biggest division. We have 23 parks, soon to be about five miles of River Trail. I kind of already went over what all we do there, and we essentially use this division. It's seen kind of as the go-to division for the city. If we need to move equipment, if we need to fix things, we're kind of the ones that get called upon to go assist other departments, and we're happy to do so. We do special projects. Here's a couple of pictures of those. You know, we pour concrete, we got prepared for the bass coming in, we take care of our trails, we do park maintenance and projects. Here's a picture of the Regional History Center. We did all the landscaping improvements there. We tore out that sidewalk, we poured a new sidewalk, we installed irrigation, we installed new sod. You can see visuals there. We trim trees. If you're out in the parks now, you'll see that's a lot of what we're doing right now is tree maintenance. This is typically an off-season project, so that's why we're doing it now. It's the best time to do it, and it's when we have time. We also recently cleaned up the landscaping at the Shell Hayes Mansion. This is a, took us a couple of months to do here and there, but it's very nice. If you haven't been back there, we'd be happy to show it to you, but it's very cleaned up, it's cleaned out, and we're preparing it for its future use. Parks, we talked a little bit about this at our subcommittee meeting last night, kind of the inventory. We have 12 neighborhood parks. We have two community parks, which is Louise Hayes and Lehman Monroe. We have regional parks. We have one linear park, which essentially linear is straight, which is the River Trail. And then we have five specially used parks, and I included the golf course in there as well, even though it's not in our department. Fun fact, we maintain the parks every day out of the year except for two. Thanksgiving and Christmas Day are the only two days that we're not in the park, but we are on call in case we need to be. Included, just some of our major parks in here. I know you guys have probably seen these, but I thought it was important to include here. Louise Hayes Park, we have, of course, we have our Crown Jewel, which is our fountain. It's a open year-round. It's contingent upon weather, of course, and it's open from 10 to 11. We have different color packages that we can program. As y'all have seen, I'm sure, we have Rainbow, we have July 4th, we have, you know, we had the Mardi Gras package, we have Tybee when they, or their homecoming, we turn on their colors as well. And this fountain is a recreational use, and also an aesthetic use, too. So when it's cold, it's still on because it's meant to be a visual impact. And it's on a recycled water system. It's not a one, it's not a pass-through system. It recycles the water, has a filtration system. We have a playground, we have the new bathrooms, we have the new family pavilion as well. Of course, we have the River Trail that comes through the park. We have the Centennial Stage. We have the kayak concessionaire in the park as well, and you can see some people enjoying the kayaks and canoes. We have the pavilions that staff built a few years ago. We have the playground, Lehman Monroe. You can also reserve these pavilions. Here's a photo of Lehman and Monroe before the improvements from two years, three years ago now, almost. Basically, it's just an empty field, there's nothing there. Now we have a dog park, and I think you've heard this before, but all of the equipment that we use for the amenities is recycled from our existing inventory. And also, thanks to Councilmember Vocal, we now have a bat house in Lehman Monroe Park. So hopefully, in a few months, we'll start to see it occupied, but it could take longer than that, so we'll keep you updated when Dracula and his buddies move in. The downtown pavilion overlooks the park as well. You can rent it. It doesn't see a lot of use, except for the new Kerbal Farmers Market that just started, but you can rent it for your private events. We did go through and replace the benches that were there before. We inherited these benches with the private donor, and then we went through about a month ago and actually replaced them all with a commercial-grade bench to match our existing system. Here's an aerial of Carver Park. This park has a large pavilion, basketball, has a playscape, has a spray ground, and again, thanks to Councilmember Vocal, he brought this to our attention. We went in and replaced the backboards, and we restriked the courts as well just the last couple of weeks. Here's a photo of the spray ground, which is a seasonal use. It operates April through October. Homme Creek Park is another popular neighborhood park. It's essentially a granite trail and has passive exercise equipment. We went through about a year or so ago and updated the bridges and the connectivity to make it more ADA accessible and a little bit more user-friendly. So these are type of, another special project that we do for our parks. Guadalupe Park is one of our parks on the list that actually hasn't seen major updates. It's one of the last ones on that list, and this is the park that we talked about actually upgrading if the River Trail actually makes it to this park in the future, if that's the will of the council. But we do probably need to eventually do some major updates to this park as well. It is one of our older ones. Here's an aerial of Singing Winds Park. This park is one of our, another one of our larger parks. It houses the skate park, it has the ball fields, it has a playground, it has the pool, and it has also trails here, too, which you can see to the right of the screen, natural trails. Another nice aerial view of the park. And here's a photo of the trail, skate park, we have the playground equipment as well. The River Trail, we are, we have about four and a half miles of completed trail, five with a new segment that's actually just kind of starting. We have six trailheads, soon to be seven at the Deert Center, and you can actually rent trailheads for special events and runs. And I threw this photo in there, I thought it was interesting, because this project has been on the works since the '70s, and if you look closely at the pictures, you can actually see the bell bottoms from the people that were in the photo, so you can tell how old these are. Again, on the trail, it was designed for access to the river and for the natural component of it. Each trailhead has interpretive signage. We have pet met stations, we have benches, we have trash receptacles located along the trail as well. We have lots of people that use it. We see families, we see strollers, we see runners, we see bikers, we see, you know, dogs, we see all sorts of mixed use on the trail, which is great, that's what it's for. It's also home to our Kerbal Triathlon Festival as well. Here's Lowry Park. As you recall, this is our most recent completed segment, and the next segment of the trail will actually pick up from this park and run to the Deert Center, as you know. There's kind of a image of that. The trail will actually come, it's not gonna come up from the trailhead itself, it's actually gonna come up through, next to that kind of pedestal area, and wind its way back through the property from there. So it's, basically, the trailhead is just gonna be a connection to the trail. Tennis Center, you know, we're in the middle of this project right now. We're under design, and we are expecting to come back fairly soon. We've seen some preliminary conceptuals from our consultant, and we're hoping to wrap up the final design process soon, and to be able to share that with you. Okay, Aquatics Usability Study. This is a project that you've seen recently as well. It's evaluating the existing needs of the pool and figure out what we need to do to meet the needs of the community. Last night, we took this application to EIC Corporation, and they actually directed us to draft a funding agreement. So they did approve the initial phase of it, so we will be bringing the funding agreement and hold a public hearing at their next meeting, and then bring it back to you at your second meeting in March for final approval. All right, Sports Complex. Aerial of the facility, 104 acres, and, you know, baseball on one side, soccer on the other. Just because we get this question a lot, we have, fun fact, we have 813 parking spots, 295 are on soccer, 518 are on the baseball side, and this does not include anything along Town Creek. This is strictly designated parking. Couple pictures of the soccer side. Again, 20 acres of irrigated field space. We're currently home to Our Lady of the Hills. They're playing their soccer games there. Hill Country Crush has started their league, and then Hill Country Soccer will be starting shortly. And some future use, we've seen some interest from Tybee, they're interested in hosting a summer league there. We've heard some interest from Notre Dame, and then we'll also be moving our sports leagues over to the complex as well. Okay, Baseball. As you know, we held our first, or DBAT held their first tournament in November. It was a very successful tournament. There were 21 teams, 256 players from all over the place, and even a couple from out of state, one from Louisiana and one from Oklahoma. I believe most of you have been inside the DBAT facility, but it's approximately 17,000 square feet, and there's lots of fun things inside for baseball players to do. There's the batting cages, the pitching lanes, and there's concessions, and there's actually a meeting room in there as well. It's operated by DBAT. Aquatics, fun fact, you guys know this already because you have the packet, but the pool was built in what year?
1970.
1970, that's right. So our pool is a summer operational facility. We're open essentially the end of May, and we're trying to extend it out to the middle of August this year, depending on if we can keep our staff onboard. But we hire about 20 staff, and we do open swim, we do programming, we do lots of fun stuff there. Here's an aerial of the pool. We have the pavilion, we have picnic areas, we have shade structures, we have the high dive, we have the low dive, we have the baby pool. It's a 50-meter by, actually, it's actually 20 yards, six-lane pool. Photo of the baby pool, hasn't changed much since the '70s, except we've put a shade structure over it and painted it and put a fall zone in there. Couple pictures of open swim. We're open 12 to 6, we're closed only on Mondays for maintenance, and then we're open every other day. And our pool attendance actually increased from last year 27 percent. We're trying a couple of new things at Aquatics this year. We're doing some promotional days. If you dress like a pirate, dress in a KSD school shirt, you get in free. We're doing free ice cream from 2 to 4 on July 4th, some things to kind of get some fun activity, and then we're also hosting a family swim night, which is a special event at the end of the summer.
Is there an age on the ice cream?
I marked it.
No. Feel free to come on in. The Olympic Police South diving platform is back in the day. These have since gone away, and now we still have the high and low dive, which you can see the high dive there, it looks pretty dwarfed.
Is that what that is?
We do have facilities available for rental. You can rent the pavilion for parties, you can rent out the picnic area if you want to stay for the day and have shade. We do swim lessons, we do group swim lessons, we do private swim lessons, and new this year, our semi-private swim lessons as well. And these are, these are very popular programs.
What does that mean, semi-private?
For two, semi-private, two kids, one instructor. We do senior water aerobics, we do adult lap swim. New this year will be a junior lifeguard camp, and we created this program to try to recruit future lifeguards. If you see the age, it's 10 to 14. We start hiring lifeguards at 15, so once they kind of complete that, if they're on the older age of it, we're hoping they'll come back the next summer and apply with us. Our lifeguards are licensed under Jeff Ellison Associates. We receive two audits per summer, which are unannounced, and every year, we do an exceptional job passing those. We have a competitive guard team, which you guys know about, we've talked about before. They compete against all other teams against the state. They won every competition this year and last year, so they're a really good group of kids. They do, they're trained in a lot of different areas, first aid, CPR, higher-level stuff. They use lots of higher-tech equipment. Couple examples of the first aid things that they go through. They learn how to manage impaled objects. If you'll notice in these pictures, all of this is occurring in our lobby, because we don't have a designated first aid room at the pool. We deal with spinal injury management. We can handle eyebol wounds, if your eyeball ever pops out when you're at the pool, we can deal with that. Gunshot wounds, we can, that's actually a staged photo, it's not a real shot. We try to use makeup and fake blood to simulate it, but we can manage, you know, primary care of that as well. Scary to think about, but you never know nowadays. Recreation and Activities. You guys, I believe, have seen the Activity Guide. It went out in the mail this year for the first time ever, which is fantastic. I'm hearing lots of positive feedbacks, I'm getting emails and phone calls from people saying, hey, this is great, thanks for doing that. And we actually designed this in-house. I'd like to give recognition to our IT department. Martin Greenwell designed the guide this year. We have our daddy-daughter dance that we just completed. When the girls show up, they get a flower, and they have a wonderful time with their fathers at the dance. They get fed, they get music, and they play, and it's a really neat event, so here's a couple pictures from a couple weeks ago. As you can see, we had a big crowd. We moved it to the Youth Events Center this year because we have sold out every year, and we've had to turn people away, so we found a bigger venue to where we can still provide quality, a quality event without limiting the number of tickets. So we doubled the capacity to 500 this year. We have Get Outdoors Day in June. It's a free event. Several of you were there last year, and Councilmember Vocal and Rudy participated, as I did, in the dunking booth, so I appreciate that. We just, it's a lot of fun events. We had Nerf wars, we had passive recreation activities that, we had horseshoes, we had, you know, the big parachute, we had snake education. We had lots of fun things for the community to do, and it was a neat event that we're just gonna continue to expand. We had a skateboard competition in the summer. We usually have about 20 or so participants, but it's a neat event that TNJ helps us sponsor. We have Movies in the Park series, that's very popular. Half of them are at Louise Hayes, half of them are at Kerbal Shriner. This is gonna be a new event this year that we're gonna continue to expand in the future. This is not a picture from last year, this is actually a picture from the skateboard competition, but you get the idea. It'll occur at Louise Hayes Park, and we'll try to, you know, change themes. One night have, you know, country music, next night have, you know, whatever it is, but we're hope to have about five or six of them programmed for next year.
The Mayor's Youth Advisory Council wanted to have a talent show, so just go with that in.
Cool, even better. Well, we're gonna do a hot rod night this year as well at Louise Hayes Park. You know, cars, vendors, a band, you know, kind of a '50s-type, 50, '60s-type boom, so more to come on that one. And we also do the fireworks for July 4th and do the support staff for that event. We do the kids' triathlon at the end of the summer at the pool. We do the wet and wagon at the end of the summer at the pool. And also, our family fright night, which is very popular last year. We moved it from Kerbal Shriner to Louise Hayes and had roughly 3,000 people come to it. It was a great event. We had a costume contest, we had bounce house, we had food. We had about 32 participants with trunker treat-style events that kids could get candy at. You can see a picture, we have library staff that helped out program this event as well. And it was just a great event that we're gonna continue to expand. And it was free. We also have the holiday lighted parade. Quick video for you. It's a time-lapse video that shows you all of the entire parade. Thought that was neat. And that's how fast the parade is in real life. Just kidding, it's about an hour. Of course, actually, all of you participated last year in the parade. I think I have a picture, yeah, there we go, have a picture of all the councils, so thanks again for participating in the parade, as always, and we do have our events. We dressed up for the occasion as well, and then also, we had the comprehensive plan float as well.
Can you clarify who that is for those that can't tell?
It's a junior member of the council, always.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It's very festive. We also provide event support for several events. We have Kerbal Festival of the Arts in May. We have the Fourth on the River, we have Shakespeare in the Park, we have the Triathlon Festival, we have Stock Festival, and then we have the Farmers Market as well. Farmers Market is new. It's currently occurring the first Friday of every month downtown at the pavilion, and they're actually looking to hopefully expand that in the spring. They're looking to possibly do a weekly market, so more to come on that. We also do all the ribbon cutting, seducations, grand openings for the city that we do, and here's some several photos for the last couple of years, and obviously, our most recent one at the Sports Complex. Athletics, we do soccer, we do flag football, we do softball, we do kickball, which is gonna be a new league this year. And if you can see, that's actually Chief David Knight kicking the ball. We hosted an interdepartmental kickball tournament last summer. We only had two teams, but it was police versus fire, and that's Chief Knight. I thought that was fun. So we're actually opening up the league to the public this summer. And last thing is we do also commemorative programs as well. We do the benches throughout the park system in downtown. We do the bricks downtown from the Main Street program, and then we also do the commemorative tree program as well.
I have a question about the bricks. I noticed a lot of them are deteriorating. Are they mapped out with whose where, so they can replace them, or is it?
Kind of, yeah. It's, the database for that is a little bit, a little bit undesirable. We're going through, we have several lists that we actually need to compile throughout the years. There's been a lot of different staff in the positions, but that's something that we noticed the other day by popos. A lot of that is starting to pop up.
Is that just runoff, or?
We thought initially, it was some of the delivery trucks that are kind of coming up over the curb, but then once we started to look at it a little bit more, it's a little bit, there's no pattern to it, so we're not sure if it's just time, or somebody went and hit them. We can't tell, but we'll, that's something that's on our list to address.
Ashley, do we, I have several questions. Do we do the upkeep on the cabins and the buildings at the parks?
Yes.[1704.87]
And do you, how do our prices there compare to, I know there's not a lot of other parks around to compare it to, but do we know? Do we do a comparison?
We do. They're pretty comparable. We do that. Every couple of years, we reach out to other similar parks to see what they're charging. And we fall pretty much in line with those, so we're pretty fair market.
If you rent one of those, do you get sheets, or do you have to bring your sheets?
The mini cabins do not provide lidens. You bring your own, but the park cabin and the ranch house, they're provided for you.
And are there room for more cabins on either side?
To add additional loops, possibly. We'd have to look at that.
Because it does always break even, it seems like, which is good for the parks.
That's our most popular feature, are the mini cabins.
Do you have any idea how much use of all these parks is by people that don't live in the city? Now, I know the new ball fields and soccer, we clearly are looking to bring people to town at those. But it looks like to me, we must get a fair number of folks that don't live in the city coming. And I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just curious as to if we got any idea how many.
For Curville Schreiner Park specifically, the majority of the usage is non-residents. We don't have resident and non-resident fees at our parks, so it's kind of hard for us to tell, to measure that.
I'm talking about all these others, like the swimming pool and just all of the different parks that you touched on.
Right. We really don't know because we don't have, for the ones that are fee-based, we don't have different rates for them.
Yeah. Any guess? Twenty-five percent? Ten percent?
Most of the pool, the pool specifically is mainly locals. Sports complex will be mainly for tournaments, obviously, out of town folks.
Just walking on the river trail, there's quite a few visitors. People that just start talking, asking you questions. Yes, ma'am. What was the total staff of parks and recreations?
We have about thirty-three FTEs.
Thirty-three. And is alcohol use allowed at Curville State Park? If you rent one of these facilities for a family reunion, can you have beer?
Yes, you can. It was prohibited, and then a few years ago we changed that.
Is that all parks or just that?
All, all parks except for the sports complex. We'll recommend no alcohol there.
And singing wins?
Singing wins, you can have it, except, there's exceptions to that. You have to be within fifty yards away from the ball fields during different program times, if there's a game going on.
Is that posted, Ashley?
It is.
And off the parks?
About alcohol?
I guess we're going to look at the athletic complex, but I guess we don't want to advertise. I didn't know that, so I'm kind of surprised.
It's not on our signage that it's allowed, but there is signage at the ball fields prohibiting within fifty feet.
Do you, do you need a first aid room? Is that what you were alluding to for training at the pool? Is that something that could be handled kind of economically?
I would recommend it, and that's something that we'll look at in the feasibility study too. You know, we get lots of nosebleeds at the pool. We get lots of pull toe. We're dealing with blood on almost a daily basis. We don't have anywhere to do that, so we bring them into the lobby. People are coming. It's just not, it's not sanitary. It's not good for, you know, aesthetics.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'm glad you're.
That looks like even a little, you know, almost a little prefab building to get that.
Economically, yes.
The tennis center map, does it, does it pretty much show what our consensus is that we want? Or is that decision made yet?
The map that I showed you had, was essentially the items that we need to address and fix. We have ADA issues over there. We have connectivity issues. We have failing courts. We have failing infrastructure over there. We have drainage issues. So, that map there was addressing all of that. Any new items will come with the conceptual design to incorporate both items.
And that would be from the meetings that were held from the community, feedback from the community.
But the main thing we need to do before we do all the fun extra stuff is we need to address the issues that we have.
You bet. You bet. You bet. And then the chalk festival, what does our participation in that cost the city?
In a dollar figure, I don't have that with me here today.
What is our part to do?
Essentially, we do a little bit of backend marketing for them. We include them in our activity guide, press release too. We take care of the plaza. We do some trash pickup. We maintain the bathrooms. And essentially, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so you're not getting.
In police. I'm sorry, in police, security.
It's support stuff. But I'd be interested if we can derive it, what that costs us.
Ashley, I was wondering if you had just generally, rather than go through each page, are there any areas of particular difficulty that you're seeing right now? Something glaring that needs to be looked at on a council level, you know, not on your staff level? Obviously, you do upgrades periodically, but is there any, for instance, like the first aid room, is there something we, you see a glaring problem with or need for?
You know, obviously, infrastructure is a big one. We've done a pretty good job with upgrading all of our parks, with the exception of the pool in Guadalupe. I think on the other side of it is at a staffing level, we're continuing to, you know, take on more and get these great amenities. We're adding to the river trail. We have a new sports complex. And we're stretched pretty thin on our staffing level too. I know there's obviously limited resources for that, but we're pulled in a lot of different directions there.
Last year, Ashley, when we talked about the parks, maybe at budget time or something, we talked about the sad state of the water infrastructure at Curville Schreiner Park. Have we been able to do anything about that, or is that still a high priority?
It's still a priority. We need to, Public Works Director and I met a couple of months ago about that and how we could possibly get started. But that is, you're correct. I'm glad you brought that up. That's a big, big one for us. We need to upgrade the infrastructure over there. We just addressed a line leak over there a couple of months ago.
That, that kind of thing. Leaky pipes.
That's a, that's a big one that we'll need to address. Yeah, because if that, if that goes down, then we have some major issues over there, and that impacts our revenue too, our customers.
I got a question, kind of tying into the staffing thing. We seem to be focusing a lot of our parks, spending resources, whatever, on facilities. But when, when will the programming of these facilities essentially build up? Like, you know, there's not, and we have other youth organizations in, you know, baseball, soccer, and all that stuff. But normally a city will have, you know, adult leagues and whatnot. Are we not able to because of staffing, or is there other things holding us back there?
It depends on what facilities you're talking about. Are you talking about Louise Hayes or?
Well, not so much the facilities as much as just the fact that, like, we used to have a big softball league in town, a city league. We don't. We've had various times, city basketball leagues. We don't. I assume that's because of staffing, or I know in basketball, there was also conflict of players that I think people walked away from. But in any case, what's the future-looking aspect of that?
Yeah, no, it's a two, kind of a two-part answer. Part of that, like you said, is staffing. We've gone from a staff to one to two to one, now back to kind of two rec staff. So, we're starting to grow our things. We're adding, we're adding back the kickball. We brought back flag football. We brought back soccer. We're looking at some other stuff too. Softball is something we've actually seen a trend down in the past almost ten years that I've been here at Singing Winds. We used to have a big league, twenty league teams, and we offer the leagues. We're just not, they're just not making. So, is there, we're just starting to see a trend kind of nationwide trending down for just rec leagues. You know, the people that play are either now in the senior league, which is extremely successful for us, or they're involved in the kids' activities and they don't have time to do it. So, we're starting to move with the trend, saying, okay, well, softball's not going to make. Let's do something else like kickball or ultimate frisbee or soccer, whatever they want. Let's offer that instead.
I don't know if they put anything in the plans for the tennis center, but I know a lot of seniors go from tennis, full-court tennis, to pickleball. Do we have any, is there any adjustment there? Was there any thought, or was there any feedback from the public on that?
For pickleball?
Yeah.
We do have actually pickleball.
So, it's already set up?
Yeah, we striped those a couple, I think it was a couple of years ago. So, we have a couple of courts there now in the middle bank, yes.
Our age, that's what we do. On your butterfly garden, I get this thing all the time from the monarch, you know, mayor's monarch pledge or something. Do we, could we use that to participate in that particular program? Do we tie that in for monarchs?
We can. That's something we can look into. I know we were on the list, but it never really kind of went anywhere. But that's something we can look into to see if they can help us.
Seems like the main thing is what you plant.
Yeah.
It is. It's a type of plant. And then I'll just push it to you and they'll get off my back.
Yeah, I've already reached out to them about that too, so, okay. We can look into that as well.
Do you do any work at all for the golf course?
We don't. Golf is its own department.
Okay. You don't do anything for them?
Just occasionally. We do building maintenance over there and custodial, but we don't do grounds maintenance or operations.
And I sent, forwarded you several initiatives for the Parks Board to discuss a Christmas lighting thing and some other things. So, I'll look forward to some feedback from the advisory board on those kind of things. Just, you know, kind of expanding what we do at Louise Hayes in particular and events. And of course, Mr. McDaniel wants a.
Zip line.
Zip line. So, put that on your list.
I do too.
Yeah.
I do too.
Fun it, and we'll do it.
Straight to the bat house. Just saying.
Yeah, I think.
Qualified.
To the batmobile.
All right. Any more questions? Actually, that was a very good presentation.
I have a, I have a few. Is there a reason that we don't have the bonfire for homecoming anymore? Is that the city or the school?
You know, you asked me that the other day, and I have not had a chance to find that out yet. I know it went away in the park renovations, and then it never got brought back, but I will, I do intend to look into that.
Since we did renovations, can you think of an area that would be okay?
You know, I'd have to look at it and see what the specifications are for that and what the requirements. I know they'd probably have to be, you know, a fire marshal would have to be involved with, you know, parameters and that kind of stuff. So, I'll look into it and I'll let you know.
Do we, I've heard problems about nutria. Do we have a nutria problem, or is it just random?
Not that I'm aware of. I can visit with Tara Bush now with UGRA to see, but not that I'm aware of.
And do we promote hunting and fishing for like a large fish contest, large deer contest?
We do the bow hunt, Curville Schreiner, so that's one of them. And then we do stalk the river with the trout a couple of times a year.
Is there like a biggest catch of the day, or anything like that?
No, we actually used to do a fishing derby years ago, a youth fishing derby, and that kind of went away for whatever reason. But that's something that we can look into, trout stalking, or a different event.
And do we manage the deer population in town? I don't know if that's for parks. What is that?
That would be Texas Parks and Wildlife. It's a good question, though.
I got, I got one last question about the sports complex with the rain coming today. Have we laid out a plan of who makes the call on whether those fields get used on a rain day and who's supposed to fix them?
Yeah, we do. Our staff does, and we've actually made the call for today that we won't play games tonight because of the rain.
So, our staff would actually, if it was going to be, it's like a tournament that they're having, is that going to be the city's responsibility to kind of put the field together ready for that tournament, or is that DBAT?
Yes. We are responsible for the contract to prep the fields, to prepare them. And so, and therefore, we have the call on whether or not we need to call games. Because, you know, our, first and foremost for ours is, you know, obviously, safety, and then we want to maintain the integrity of the fields. We don't want them torn up.
Do you do a scavenger hunt or anything like the Amazing Race?
No.
Not yet?
We can.
Not yet.
We can look into it. We might. That'd be a good one to incorporate into our family picnic.
That would be. And the other thing that's been mentioned, I'll pass along to you, is any kind of event, contests that could be in, you know, the Nimitz Lake area. I don't guess we have enough waterway. People have talked about water sports and water events that might bring crowds. We talked about it. We'd need access from some private businesses, you know, for viewers. But there's a lot of things for the advisory board to look into that could be exciting. Any other questions or comments?
Just one. How big is the recreation hall at the park? Do you know square footage size?
I don't know the square footage, but it has a capacity for about a hundred people.
Sounds big enough for a silent disco.
There you go.
Ashley, in the, on the one seventy-three, on not the riverside, is there, that front part I know is, you know, reserved for particular, where the teepee is for some kind of usage. Could that be a place for, I've been approached about doing a western or some kind of reenactment, you know, as an event. Is there any restriction on what you can do on that particular piece of property on a temporary basis?
Not entirely. It all depends on the season and the use. We probably wouldn't want to host that type of event during our peak season, and parking's always a big issue over there. We don't have, we don't have parking for big events over there. That's one of the reasons why the runs have kind of went away from the park and started to utilize the trail instead. But if it's something that we can kind of manage and look at, we certainly would be welcome to visiting that.
Okay. Any others?
Do we irrigate any of the parks, minus the sports?
We do a couple of them. We have them at Singing Winds. We have a little bit at Louise Hayes, and we have some at the library that we take care of too. We have them, we have it at Carver. I believe that's it.
Can we, can we plant more trees around the splash park and leading to the parking and leading to the river where it's so sun-baked in the summer? Can we, can we water new trees there? Can we manage it from the standpoint of keeping them alive?
Yeah, that's actually something that's been brought up several times from several different people, and we actually have met with several folks about that. And we are coming up with a plan. That's, we're looking at starting to plant the trees, you know, as the memorial trees come in, and our own trees along that side, the west end of the park, near Trailhead, and kind of going down. We don't have irrigation. We probably won't put irrigation out there, but we're going to look at some different watering sources that we can use. There's some equipment that we can get that can hold water, and then we staff can manually water them too. So, that's part of our plan forward.
Good, good, because that's just a negative on Louise Hayes.
Something that we've heard too.
You just feel like you're frying.
Only eleven deer harvested in the bow hunt?
Yes, yeah. It's starting to decline, so we're actually working with.
Really?
I'll go out there.
Gosh, they must have sneaked off to my yard.
Are there really bad shots at bow hunt?
There you go. I think that's it.
There's proficiency testing, but it went, yeah, when it started in 'oh eight, it went from thirty-two, and now it's kind of dwindled down. I mean, but, you know, it's doing its job. It's managing, you know, the numbers. We were inundated with deer originally, and it's kind of, you know, it's doing what it's supposed to do. But we're working with the Parks and Wildlife to see, hey, is there still, do you think this is still appropriate for us?
Think we've got a problem on that end of town or not?
Not sure yet. We're still, we're going, we need to visit with them about that. But right now, in kind of initial discussions, they think our population is healthy, and they kind of recommend at this point initially to continue the hunt. But we may recommend scaling it back a little bit to where it's not closing the entire park down for a month. Maybe do we do two weeks instead, or go to every other year or something more manageable.
How many of the cabins are occupied by park hosts?
Cabins? None. We have park, separate park host sites, RV sites. They must have an RV to participate in the program.
Good. Anything else?
I have one more. Is there any area for community gardens at parks?
Sure, certainly. We haven't identified any specifically, but, I mean, we have rooms in parks, we have native areas, so. Great question. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ashley. Very good. Does anybody need a break, or do you want to go on to item number two? Okay, item, you okay? Item number two is stormwater drainage and localized flooding. I don't know who will be doing this, but.
It's Stuart.
Well, did y'all like the ambiance this morning? We tried to set the mood a little bit outside of the presentation.
Well done. We'll have a tour when we're done, huh?
There you go. Well, since Ashley is the fund department, I guess we're going to be something less than that. We'll just, we'll be public work. So, I tried to break this presentation down into normally channelized waterways and then improved or developed drainage systems. So, as I go through, you can ask questions, or we can wait till the end. It's kind of broken into a little bit different segments, so it may, you can ask questions along the way or wait till the end, either way. Now, the first piece of it, we'll be talking about creeks and streams and drainage, or streams and ravines. Those are all privately owned, with the exception, the reason that privately owned is important is that there is no ordinances or anything like that for maintenance requirements. We don't tell anybody, you have to cut your trees down, or you have to keep it mowed. There is a mowing ordinance that says you have to keep your yard mowed. It has to be less than a foot high. And it can be applied to drainage ways. It's just not done very often because it's very hard to keep that, that portion of the, of the. Very hard to keep the river bottoms to that kind of standard when there's so much brush that grows down there. So, you say, well, what about the river? There are some areas in the river that are not owned by the individuals. It's the navigable river. The only one that we have in the county or in the city is Guadalupe. And navigable is the, the property owners own up to the bank of the river, or what's called the gradient boundary. And then the state owns the dirt that's under the water. Nobody, property owner does not, doesn't own the water in any of these instances, but just the property and where it stops. So, if it is not a navigable stream, then the person can own all the way under the stream, the bank of it, and then, and under it, and the other side. So, it depends on how your property is divided up, if you own both banks to the center line. And the reason that's important is, there again, the maintenance of it. We have some places that people are saying, well, we want the city to maintain our drainage ways or our creeks behind our house, and we kind of want it to look like a park. Well, for one, the city doesn't own that. That's owned by private property owners, and we don't have the right to get in there and maintain it. They actually do, so it's up to them. You can see on the picture there, those are all the, there's tons of creeks and streams in the, in the county there, and Curville's in the red. So, lots of area to maintain if we want to. The way the city maintains our drainage systems is we have the parks in open spaces. Ashley's crew does a lot of that, cleaning up the parks. And luckily, lots of parks have streams going through them to add as an amenity. We clean up the debris after floods.
Advance your slide there.
We clean up the debris after the floods. There's a lot of places in the city where drainage comes out onto our streets. It washes rocks and trees and grass and debris out into the street, and we'll send a loader over and the guys, and they'll, they'll pick that up after, after a rain event. We also go down to Legion Crossing, which was on the Guadalupe. Not every event, but the big events will bring in logs and debris in there, and we'll clean that up along the river. Guadalupe, our UGRA does one a year, once a year cleanup, and that's what the picture is here. They walk the whole river and pick up as much debris as they can, and we assist with picking that up and getting it to the landfill. Dredging of Nimitz Lake. Now, we've done it once, not the whole lake. Dredging of Nimitz Lake. Now, we've done it once, not the whole lake. Um, it's just around the head, or the headworks, um, system there for our intake structure. Um, that does require a lot of permitting through the state as that, as we talked about earlier, that is a navigable s- stream, and so you gotta go to the Army Corps of Engineers and Texas Parks and Wildlife, and there's a whole bunch of hurdles you have to overcome to, to, um, be able to dredge in there.
So Stuart, we did that study, uh, the year before last, I think it was, and we'd lost two hundred acre feet, or I don't know, something like that, or how?
About a hundred and fifty, yes.
Hundred and fifty, okay. So, um, when, do we have any kinda policy, you, I, I, that's first I'd heard of that, that we dredge around the intake for the water treatment plant? So, do we, when it gets to a certain level, we need to increase that capacity or anything?
It's all part of the study and the recommendations from the engineers, consultation with the state, and so their, their recommendation was that we not dredge at this time. So after each study, there's an evaluation and recommendation made.
The reason that we dredged there, um, is that the silt had piled up in front of the dam.
Sure.
And it wasn't flowing into our intake structure as well, so we cleaned it out. Um, dredging's very difficult. Um, well, if you're upstream where all the gravel is, it's not as bad as if you're down by the dam. Um, it's the, the, the muck that you're pulling out is about the consistency of pudding or something. It doesn't stack very well. It's very hard to find a place to put it. It takes about, it takes years for it to dry out enough to haul it off.
But it does help our water quality, right? Cause if you, I don't know where our intake is set, but, you know, the more sedimentation and stuff you have, the more you have to filter.
Yes, it'll help with the water quality, depending on what, what's in the, the muck that you're pulling out.
Something we look at fairly often, or?
We'll look at it after big, big, big flood events. We'll kinda go in and take a look at it. It's a little bit difficult and a little bit cost prohibitive to do very often on the, on the reservoir itself, just to figure out how much water it's holding.
Just around the intake is where I'm talking.
Yes, yes, we would look at that. And then erosion control, um, obviously, streams and creeks in the whole country are very steep, and they have erosion, so we'll, we'll monitor that and, and do what we, we need to do to, to kinda keep those in check. And then we also do brush cleanup as needed. So the FEMA flood pa, flood map, um, this is, this is the Guadalupe River in the dark blue, and then the little tributaries, um, are, are in the lighter blue. There's, the, the dark blue is also the, what they call a hundred-year floodplain or the one percent chance flood. That is the area that, that FEMA really is intending to keep open to discharge the flood. They wanna say, okay, we don't want people building, well, we'll allow people to build homes in there, but if you do it, you have to follow a certain level of standard. The city of Curville enforces that standard, um, or permits that use of those areas, um, as long as the developer follows FEMA's regulations. So you can't bring fill in unless you do a study that says you're not going to cause a rise in the floodplain. Your elevation of your house has to be, uh, one foot above that elevation of the, of the flood. And that, that you can't remove fill either, to, you, you don't want any impact in that area. Um, our citizens in Curville can build in the floodway. That's one thing that a lot of cities have taken out of their FEMA ordinances, is to say that, um, that citizens should not be able to build in the floodway. Curville, you can't. So we've, we've got the most relaxed standard really available. So I'm gonna, I handed out a couple exhibits here that we're gonna talk about with the, this is where we changed from kinda the natural course on to developer-made drainage systems. And these exhibits here, I'll take B first, if, if you will, if anybody needs a copy, but I don't have it on the screenshot. There's some copies right over here on the, on the table. So B is kind of a normal development, which you may see from the water up at number four, flowing down on two. This looks to be a doctor's office or something, but you can envision a subdivision in that area. And that, that, when people come to the city and say, okay, I wanna build whatever, a, a large subdivision.
What are we looking at? B?
The water's gonna
I'm sorry, we're looking at B?
Yes.
B, yes.
Okay.
Everybody there? So the water comes down off of the hills, out of the subdivision, comes through the homes, and, and then it's gathered in these channels around the outside, um, and then we make them hold that water. Where it flows through the fives area around the outside of the subdivision, down into three where it's gathered, and then into a holding pond into number six on the bottom left side of the page. And that holds the water till it gets discharged at a rate that did, that does not exceed the pre-development standards. And so what we're trying to do is prevent developments from discharging water across their neighbor. That's going to cause an increase in flood velocities, um, throughout the system. So, um, the, the, the real question to the city, or what we're gonna be looking at, is the ownership of that water. Where does the city want to take up ownership of that floodwater? Do we wanna take, take ownership of it as it's in the, as it's in the detention pond? We have some subdivisions that we do that. Then we have other subdivisions that we don't take ownership of the water till it's left the property through an easement. Um, and then we have others that we don't own the water, uh, or own, own the, the, the dirt under the water anywhere along the way to, that makes it to the river before the city has any maintenance requirements of it. There is not a good standard that tells staff, at this point, we are going to, um, make the developer build this system, and then when he gets it to this point, we'll take, we'll take, uh, we'll take ownership of it. And it's, the exhibit A will kinda help understand that hopefully a little bit better. In exhibit A, you have a picture of a river flowing next to the development, or kind of under the development there. So in this scenario, we've had developers come in and say, okay, city, I have a piece of property, and I won't call that the river. I'll just call that a little stream or a drainage way. And they'll, they'll intend to give that to the city. Say, we want to give all the, all of this creek bottom to the city, basically for maintenance purposes. They want us to maintain it for them and keep it in a, in a decent manner. Once again, we don't have a standard for that, um, so that's something that we, we could be looking at and trying to devise what, what's council's desire? Do we wanna try to own some of the streams or, or have maintenance of them, or do we want the developer to maintain their system, their detention ponds and their, their runoff, um, all the way down to it, until it gets to the stream?
Can I just, can we just ask right there, what, I mean, obviously, maintenance is a cost and whatnot. Is there a reason that we would want to take ownership of it on their property? Instead of just forcing them to produce it out of their property in the way we want it?
My opinion is, is no, but as, as a development lives, outlives its developer and outlives its original owners, sometimes these, this infrastructure gets old and non-maintained anymore. I think we still have the right to, to, to require that homeowners association to, to maintain those amenities. But that would be the only benefit to the city owning them, is that the city's going to be around forever, and we can, can help with that. The problem is, is that most of the time, they want these maintained like a park. And it's, and we just don't have the staff, and we don't have the, the time for that kind of maintenance.
So it might be some sort of a hybrid where we're essentially taking over maintenance at some cost to the developer as they develop it, something like that, maybe?
Yeah, the developer's long gone by the time
No, I mean, if you set it up to development that way in the beginning.
Right.
That essentially, we will take it over at the beginning, but it's gonna cost you in permitting or something when you're building it. I mean, that's sort of a hybrid. It's just a, I'm just saying, something like that.
There's some options to look at there. If council wants to, we can kind of evaluate that a little bit longer. What, what I, what I did on the most recent development is I, in the, in the deed, I asked for the right of maintenance, but not the obligation. And so, in this particular scenario, there's a, there's one on the south side of town over here that they came in with the, with the perfect example of this. It was a known drainage way. It came under, under a text dot road into a channel. Uh, they wanted to channelize it and put improvement culverts in there, and then give it all to the city. So we, we don't want that. That was existing. When, when you develop, when you bought this property, that drainage was here. It's not ours to maintain anymore. It's yours to make it to the water course. You have, you have the obligation, or we have the, we have the right, but not the obligation to maintain it, in case they don't do it in the future.
But, so how would you mandate that? I, I don't see legally
Well, there's, I mean, yeah, we're gonna get into it, but there's so much at play here, you know? We don't have a master drainage plan. We don't have a drainage system. And that, and it's not unique to Curville. Older cities, you're gonna find that. You're gonna find a lot of circumstances where you have a mixed bag, like Stuart was talking about. But where we, where we run into the biggest problems is when the subdivision's built out, as he said, and the developer's gone, and there's somebody that's living there. Maybe it's the third owner. And all of a sudden, erosion starts happening at the back of the house, and they want the city to help them. And they don't have the capacity to deal with it. You know, we also, you know, take it easy drainage is another example of that.
That'd be a perfect example.
Where we don't own it, and yet erosion's taking place, so
And the argument can be made that it's much in our best interest to maintain it, even to improve it, because it'll, that one will have some effect on other city streets.
Mm-hmm, on Lewis.
Right, so that's why, we're gonna get into his presentation later about certain projects and how to try to tackle some of this.
Well, hopefully, in the beginning, when you have new development, you know, you account for all of that, and so you, you look down the line to see, you, you long-term plan. It's the older ones. It's the overlaying problem that you have.
And certainly, we've come a long way. I mean, I'm thinking of Shriners and our Legion Drive Habitat neighborhood, where we had to meet
expensive, um, drainage requirements before any of that property could be developed.
So there, the, the, there may be a, a design standard for new developments that we, that if, you know, would like to imply and say, hey, we're, we're gonna take ownership at this point or at that point, depending on what the, what council's desire is. So then we'll talk, get back to, to the slide presentation here. So this is where we start the kinda the, the man-made systems or the, the drainage developer-made systems. Obviously, they, the developer puts in streets, drainage ditches, sometimes bor, buried storm sewers. Our design system, our design storm event is twenty-five years. Uh, that means most of the time, we want our streets to handle a twenty-five-year event without over-topping. Or our culverts. Text dot has this, has theirs on, like I ten's at a hundred here, for an example. Now, that's a really, that'd be a high level of, of, um, design standard. It's almost too, it's almost unachievable on, on a residential street kind of development, so. Um, those, these, these amenities can be publicly owned or privately owned, and they're maintained accordingly. The developer would be able to maintain theirs until it leaves their property. If it leaves their property and goes across an easement, they can still requ, we can still require them to have a maintenance requirement, uh, across that easement until it gets to a natural water course, and then, and then gets discharged into that natural water course. Or this, or if the city could do it as well, you know, if that's the, that's the desire of council. There, we talked about the maintenance requirement, increased water flow should not affect neighboring properties, as you can see on that exhibit. Typically, before a developer comes, there's a sheet flow that happens, and it's not impacting its neighbor. But as these developments happen, it's almost impossible to develop something without concentrating the flow in somehow, and that's the reason for that detention area, and then help a metered flow out of that detention area, so we're not impacting, uh, people. A good example is the Croc Center, where we've, uh, we've had the big detention area, and then we meter out how, how fast it comes down the street. Some of the city, um, requirements that are made here, this, uh, we do, we, uh, maintain drainage ways by cleaning brush, um, and, and public drainage areas, systematically clean storm sewer inlets. We do have a little bit of, of, of buried storm sewer. We go out there, like the guys were out there earlier this week, anticipating this rain, getting the leaves and the trash out of the grate system, so we'll be able to get it in there.
I saw that on our report. Every day, they were doing some clearing in the
Lots of, lots of cleaning. Water brings a lot of stuff down to the street. Clearing the debris off the street after the rain and putting up barricades and low-water crossings. Uh, here in a little while, you'll see some projects that, uh, that we know flood on a regular basis, and the guys go and put barricades there, or have them available every time it threatens rain. So enforcement, as it, as it stands right now, there are really no applicable ordinances, um, that require people to maintain their, their drainage ways, um, with the exception of of some landscaping requirements of the mowing that we talked about earlier. And then code enforcement has a, has a rule that says you can't blow any debris out into the street. Keep leaves, leaves and grass cuttings out, so we don't have to pull them out of the storm drain as much. So the, what's the biggest impact of the stormwater is on our streets, um, by far. Uh, we spend, you know, a million dollars a year on streets, and water infiltration is, is by far the leading event, leading cause of, of our streets to fail. It ruins the subgrade through the cracking. There's always some cracks in the asphalt, and as those cracks open up, the water gets into them, causing soft spots in it. That calls, turns around, causes potholes, and then more water gets into it, and the pothole gets bigger. So it just, it just keeps going on and on and on. If you're in a water course, uh, where the water's flowing across the asphalt, it can actually lift it up, uh, pull it off the top of the street. Um, saturation around the so, the shoulders of the road, even on, uh, without curbs, mainly in this instance, um, gets wet on the shoulders of the road, and it starts rolling off the sides. Everybody's seen that, especially along county roads. That is the biggest cause of our failures is, is the water in the streets. Typically, or in years past, the city has said, get your stormwater to the street, and we'll take it from there. And so everybody's, that's been our design standard. Get it in the street, the worst possible place for, for maintenance purposes, and we'll take it from there. And we've, we've taken it, and it's just cost our streets a lot.
So basically, Stuart, we're spending it eve, either on the drainage system, repair, you know, innovation, or we're gonna spend it on the streets. And so I don't know what the cost comparison would be, cause the al, altern, alternative would be underground drainage to the river.
Or concrete streets. Or concrete streets?
Well.
There's, there's a bunch of different options. Concrete streets are expensive.
Yeah.
But yes, we're, we're gonna spend it, well, the way it is right now, we're, we're spending it in both places. You know, that we're not doing, the, the street work that we're doing, it, longevity just isn't gonna be there, cause we're putting the water right back on it.
Is it, is it possible, I mean, just from an engineering standpoint, to go back into some of the older areas, using the streets for drainage? Is it possible and feasible economically to change that and divert underground?
That's what you'll see in later in the presentation.
Oh, okay.
That's definite.
Okay.
So current regulations are the FEMA floodplain. We've talked about that. Their main, once again, their main goal is to keep the floodways open and keep people safe. Uh, we, we administer that for FEMA. And then we have our drainage manual, which our drainage manual essentially tells people if, if you're gonna build a drainage channel, uh, this is the way you, you this is the way you design it, and this is the way we, we anticipate it to work. It doesn't have all the requirements of where the ownership is and how to do it, and above ground, below ground, in the street, borrow ditches, burial, so. So what can we do in the future? Um, there's, there's lots of different options out there. We, um, there's more than I've, I've lifted here, but moving forward, um, up to date of our development standards, um, would be, would, I, I think would be helpful to get the water out of the street, establish where the city wants to maintain, uh, what we wanna maintain, where our ownership starts and stops. Do we want, um, uh, follow the plans to add living here? Develop a drainer master plan. Uh, we'll, we'll see some slides about that here in a few minutes. Develop a driveway standard. Um, I'll talk, I'll talk more about each one of these here in just a moment. Develop the water quality area. Implement green storm drain, um, storm drain standards. Develop a future funding source, or enhance private property maintenance standards. Um, I don't have, not, didn't elaborate a whole lot on enhancing private property maintenance standards, but things that other cities have done is have made green belt areas, um, down around streams and, and rivers, and, and ask people to kinda keep that to a different standard than, than what they're, than what we may have, what we may expect in lawns. Um, landscape ordinances, um, cleaning up different areas or, or leaving it the same. So those are some options that we would have in the, in the private property standards. So I went, in, in preparation for this, actually, it was probably December time, I talked to LNV Engineering to do, get an idea of what it would look like if we did a, a citywide master plan for drainage. And, um, kinda got some ideas, and I, I floated them out, probably the most, the ten most popular big drainage issues that we're working with. And I got, uh, talked with Derek Neiser, and they put this graph together. I know it's kinda hard to see, but what they'll, what this is depicting is the little pink things right there in the middle, if you can make them out that small. Are there, those are the, the drainage sites, um, and he would break it down into basins, and he would do a basin-wide study, and say, this is how big your, your storm drains need to be to handle the things in these basins, and this is how, how to design, um, these fixes. So if we wanted to, to hire an engineering firm to do that kinda work to, for those most, the most popular or problematic ten sites, was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And to do a citywide study and kind of incorporate it all, so when a developer comes to town and says, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a development. It's going through my property. The city can look at the master plan and say, well, we wanna participate. We know you're gonna put some storm drains in. We wanna oversize it for future development. This would be our roadmap, very similar to the water and wastewater master plan. So that would be one option. The next slide's kind of out of order, but we'll, we'll take it there. So the driveway standards, we'll go back and talk a little bit about development standards and how to, um, have probably preventative maintenance, is probably the best way to say it. The top left picture is a driveway that comes down onto a city street. You can see it has a little bit of erosion, and there's no way for, nowhere for that water to go out of that driveway except into the street. You can see it has a little bit of erosion and there's no way for, nowhere for that water to go out of that driveway except into the street. And it blows across the street and leaving debris and trash there every time it rains. And so our street department goes out and picks that up. The picture below it is actually the road, the house on the other side of the street. And you can see there's a hump there that we've tried to keep the water from blowing across the street into the person's garage.
I got one of those, by the way.
The lower, there, there's quite a few of them. And unfortunately, there's a lot of them and, and our developers, the one on the bottom, the, the next picture over on the right is a, is Century Twenty-One actually, and the developer, it's a brand-new building. And you can see the way they made their driveway. If it, if the water comes out of that, out of that gutter there, more than about two inches deep, it's gonna go into their driveway. And their building is at the bottom of their driveway. There's no, there's no design standard for driveways right now, that's the, the, the theory that we're trying to say. So as we get, as the developer, we tell the developer, put it in our street. And then people put in driveways that drain the street into their driveway, they get all the street water and they complain. Right, maybe rightfully so, maybe not. But the, but the issue is, you have to build your driveway at least to the curb height so we can keep the water in the street. So now, that one was a little out of order, I apologize for that. We'll go back and talk about some of these potential developments, the ten that were, that LNV Engineering looked at. There they are, and we'll go through them one by one, so I won't, I won't take you, take the time to read them off to you. Take-it-easy RV channel. Most, most people, I believe, know where that is. It's kind of across the street from the old city hall. There's a channel there that's that's, it's eroding, the sides are very steep, they're, they're basically vertical. And there's some houses that are in jeopardy. And on top of that channel, there's an ownership question that goes along with that. We've actually talked about this before and we, we've actually brought it to council and council said, let's see if we can find somebody to help us with this. TechStop's told us, if y'all wanna do a channel or do a, do an improvement, we'll look at doing where it crosses twenty-seven. But they, they really weren't willing to help with the, with the channel itself downstream of there. The property owner, they, they think it's ours. It's, it's not, yeah, ownership is still indeterminate. That project, when we looked at it two years ago, was about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And it's probably one of the higher ranking ones because there is property that's in jeopardy of, of damage there. Spring Street Drainage will be the next one. It's an erosion problem. Comes, a lot of the storm drains from Highway sixteen come down Washington Street and end on Spring Street. And that, there, that's a picture of it there, the gabions are, are failing. Where it drops down in the river, it probably drops thirty, maybe forty feet. And it's washed out some of the gabion mattresses, we've had an engineer look at that as well. It's about a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar project to, to kind of clean that up. It is, this one is, this one is our drainage, it is publicly owned. Hill Country Drive. Everybody's been to Wells Fargo and, and seen the water standing there in the ditch. Here again, we've, we've looked at this, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Problem with that is, that storm sewer that drains that area is very flat, it goes under Highway sixteen and then it comes down and, and goes by subway. And it, it's just too shallow, it, it does have some grade on it and so it does drain, but it doesn't drain fast.
Where does that pipe go to?
Comes all the way down in front of subway and then it goes through the park, right by the well, goes into the Louise Ace Park.
Okay.
Yeah, but it does, it does cross Highway sixteen, that's part of the reason the cost is so high.
And it's running from DPS office, it runs down that way too, right, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, all that, yeah, all that whole hill drains to that, to that, to that low spot. And then it drains at a very slow rate out of there. There again, that's, we've put signs there, we've had flashing lights and so on, so.
So our fix would be that the six hundred and fifty thousand would dig it deeper right there?
Well, that would be our, that would be our high spot then, and then we'd just slope the.
Everything underground would have to go deeper.
Yes, ma'am. And we, we have gone in there and cleaned out that channel, it is, it's as low as, as the section under the road will allow it to be. So we've gone downstream, so there's.
So that would be a TechStop cooperation too, maybe? If they were willing.
If, if they were willing, they're, they're gonna say, well, that drainage, you know, you, you, y'all got it to the road. And we could talk to them, but I, I would think that they would say, this, this is your drainage through the city. I don't know, because it's coming offside. Might be, it might be a good, might be a good one to, we're actually gonna get a new TechStop area manager or engineer soon, so.
Somebody suggested, somebody suggested to me, we build a bridge.
Over the top of it?
That just goes over it. Okay, I'll mention that, just do it.
That, there may be, there may be some benefit there, we'll see. Hay Street Drainage, this actually comes out of the Croc Center. This drainage way was actually designed fairly recently. The Croc Center Drainage is working just like it's intended to, it catches all that big storm, that's big storm and holds it back and then it's got a meter discharge. The meter, the meter discharge was size for the street. Here again, we're putting the water in the street and it normally stays in the street. Problem is, is the street flows level full when that drainage is, is draining really strongly. And so the people that park their cars on the side of the street have water up to the doors. And then the curbs are a little bit higher actually in the street to prevent it from getting up into the houses. But very, very close to, to flooding those homes when that, when that Croc Center Drainage.
And there's no way to slow that down from where it empties, I've never walked the back to that.
That's pretty bad.
You can slow it down, but then you run the risk of it over-topping the dam. It's gonna fill up the detention pond quicker and then it'll over-top the dam and then you have no metered control.
How close has it been to the top of the dam?
I've only seen it one time really get close to topping the dam. There, there's usually a debris line on it, you can go up there for days afterwards until we get, get around to cleaning it. But it's only been one time that I've really seen it.
Stuart, if the water is filling up the street, that sounds to me like a design mistake. We didn't mean for the street to be that full, did we?
Well, that was the design standard when they looked at, when they were metering, how much, how much can we let out of this thing? Because it's a balancing act. How much rain are we gonna get, what's our design criteria, how fast are we gonna let it out? Well, we know we don't wanna let it out any faster than what the street can handle. Okay, well, let's use that as our, as our, as our standard.
So this is an older part of town and it's quite common for cities to use their streets as part of their drainage system.
Sure, sure. It just seems to me like that retention pond ought to be deeper. That that's where we goofed.
Did this street ever have a problem before that pond?
Yes, it, it did have, it's always had flowing, that's why that detention pond works so well there is because the, this is a normal drainage way through there. And those homes were getting, at times they were getting water up in them. But so we have, we don't have any water going in the homes right now. However, the street is just getting, just getting beat to death by the, by the water. So it flows all the way down the, from behind the Croc Center and it makes it to about HEB before it goes into the storm drain. Or for, it's, it's pulled off in different places, but by the time it's all underground, it's at the culvert by Highway twenty-seven and HEB.
Isn't there a culvert at a Hayes and, like where reruns in?
Yes.
Where reruns is?
Yeah, the water's going in there as well. Those are actually, all those culverts are working together to handle that flow, surprisingly. Because you can go there and it's like, well, water's going down this street, it's going down that street, you really gotta look to see where it's all coming. So the one by reruns is actually gonna be the next one.
Hayes and something.
Yeah. Here it is. Clay's and Clay and Shriner, it actually comes down, some of it goes into the storm drain. And then there's a, there's a, a small drainage ditch kind of across the street, across Clay Street from Rails. And where the, the beer barn is, there's a, there's a little drainage area off to the left of the, to the road there. And that water comes through that channel and it blows all the way across the street and gets up into that gravel driveway on the, on the far side of Clay Street. And so this is a project, we, we do not have a price for this to, to fix that particular drainage. The rest of them, we don't have prices on, we're just kind of getting a taste of how.
Is the idea that we would eventually have underground drainage, that we would have a storm drain?
I, that's how most bigger cities deal with it, yes, ma'am. And it, it, that, that preserves their streets and it gets it off of the, it allows for the inconvenience of the floodwater to be somewhere that, that it's not, that it's not a problem for the citizens. So I have a lot of, says, I'll have calls over this rain event. Probably already have calls, I mean, we get tons and tons of calls because it just hasn't been something that the city's bitten off or taken to heart that, hey, you know. I think it's always been handled, well, we, we have a multi-million dollar problem that lasts twenty minutes once a month. You know, how, how.
I know, I know, but as, but as we're thinking about the comprehensive plan and people keep looking at that part of town as prime for redevelopment. The ci, the city can help that happen.
Sure.
By not letting the streets flood.
That design standard.
Fixing bad intersections like Clay and Shriner in a more comprehensive way. It's just, it's just a good, to me, it's a good kind of catalyst.
Yes, ma'am, no doubt.
Priority.
Coronado Street would be another one. It has a, it's a low intersection, floods pretty regularly, causing the, the asphalt damage that you'll see there at Coronado Street.
And again, that's at twenty-seven, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's just a low spot in there.
With TechStop on either side.
Right.
I think we should just put flags up and create that as a water park, that area.
Maybe, maybe the fund department.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Have a log ride?
Yeah.
So Lois Street, this is behind the old city hall. As, I don't know if any, if y'all remember that, but water just tears down Lois Street. This flows into the take-it-easy drainage. Take-it-easy would have to be fixed before this can be. This is the culvert at Highway twenty-seven's probably the limiting factor here. Just not enough fall, just not enough capacity in that culvert to, to make that happen. However, you would, you, even fixing those, you would still have Lois Street flooded, but at least you could get it out of there faster without the depth of water that you would have.
Because if we had our current design manual, whoever developed that would've had to build a retention pond, right? It's under a hillside.
Potentially detention ponds or you would, you would call for storm drains in there to, to be put in on, on bigger streets. East Main and Pinto Trail. This, this particular drainage is coming down onto a, a private piece of property and we ask it to do a number of ninety-degree turns in, in an open channel and the drainage doesn't, doesn't like that. There's also a manhole in the way that's in the, in the channel as it starts to straighten out and we're, we choke down the, the channel section. This, this piece of property is actually looking at developing and so we're working with the developer to kind of maybe have some solutions on getting that, keeping that into the channel instead of having it jump the banks. The next three are Fourth Street, First Street and Parks. They all have a very similar problem, they're low-water crossings and they get unindated very quickly with any kind of rain, rain event. Now, the way we handle those are we go out and put barricades out when it, when we're expecting any kind of rain event. Anybody has any questions about those, I'll take them individually, if not, they're, it's all the same, same problem. So now we're gonna move on to some maybe different other topics other than just drainage and talk about expanded water quality. Trying to get everything into one presentation here on, on things with water and streets and drainage. So we do have a water quality zone, it's not what you see on the slides here. The water quality zone as it is right now is basically to protect our drinking water supply. And it does, it does not allow gas stations to be put in along the twenty-seventh corridor. I'm going a little from memory here, but all the way from the city limits down to about Moors. Because we don't want those hydrocarbons getting into our drinking water supply. If we wanted to expand that and look at different options, there's a whole lot of different things we could do for water quality since that's most of the water that falls in this green area. Actually, all of it went in and turned on the elevations and, and got this, everything that falls into this area goes by our water treatment plant. So if we looked at doing a water quality ordinance, that may be something that we could look at and, and see how that, how that happens. Also, UGR recently put on a green storm water presentation where people are putting in some, I'll call them sand filters. As it goes through the, the storm drain, it goes, before it gets into the storm drain, it goes through a, a sand filter treatment and it cleans the water up a little bit before it gets into the, back into the, the normal stream, so.
Plus, I really like the ideas of those permeable pa, permeable paper and
permeable papers.
Concrete, asphalt, you know, that won't run directly off, quickly off into the rivers. I really think we need to look at something there, some mandates there.
Those would be good for potentially private driving and so on, city streets, they just don't have the longevity for the, they won't last on the city application. So what are other cities doing? They have a storm drain manuals like we talked about earlier. I would include the, probably a development standard within that manual that says how we want the water to be handled either in the streets or, or buried storm drain. How our driveways will, how our driveway should work, that we need a hump. If the driveway's going to potentially allow water to come out of the driveway, we need it, we need it built to prevent that. It's fairly simple to build, but you gotta do it before the house because you, you need it all to flow well. And then upstream side needs to get into the borrowed ditches or away from crossing the streets. The storm drain master plan, citywide master plan for new developments that are coming into town. So everybody knows what our, what our desires are, what our goals are and how we're trying to get there. And if a development happens, we can, we can ask them to, to kind of piggyback on that. Storm water utility fees. Whole bunch of different scenarios out there that other cities are using. Some cities use an impact or a, a utility fee, that's a one dollar per utility customer to kind of build a, a war chest to fund some of these projects. Others use what we have here in impervious cover. Cost analysis, if you're gonna put in so many acres or so many square feet of impervious cover, then there's a fee that you pay to, to the city to help the city mitigate some of those, those, those costs. The regional storm drain detention areas. Typically, that's, that's done in, in developed areas within the city. Most of the time, that's not done in a new development. That would be something like the Croc Center where we're able to handle some of that flow and slow it down and get it more of a manageable, manageable flow as it goes across the city. And then there's some bond, bond funds available as well for funding of drainage problems. Okay, for recommendations or comments, questions?
So Mayor Council, I might add, just to kind of sum it up, we, all these ideas are being floated with the Subcommittee for Curville Twenty-Fifty on water, wastewater and drainage. And so, you know, we're, we'll, some of these will make your action plans, your implementation plans, as they come to you at, at the steering committee level. We have already talked previously about a bond election for drainage projects. Now you really have a, an idea about which ones we would probably try to target, but there could be others. And they're a pretty big ticket item. Usually when cities have a storm water utility or storm water fee, most of that is used for operation and maintenance. So they're paying staff to go clear out gutters or they're, they're sweeping the streets, they're doing a lot of maintenance activities. They might use a small portion to do some small, very small drainage projects, but the money is just not big enough, a large enough sum of money to, to do these major drainage projects. So you're, you're left with bond elections to deal with those or COs, as you may see fit. So as we look forward to trying to retrofit and fix some of the existing issues, then also maybe double up with, at the same time with new design standards, driveway standards. You know, we begin to solve a lot of this and it doesn't take that long, you know, a couple of bond election cycles to really make an impact. But it's just one of those choices, right? Because there's lots of needs in the city, whether that's streets or drainage or parks or what have you, so. Any direction that you all would want to provide, that we could provide back then to the subcommittees? We have one more meeting with them in March, then we would welcome that.
I'd sure like to run by them what they think about new design standards, that's a first place to start in my mind. And we see what they see about, you know, the driveway, little things. And is there any way to redirect? Is there a cheaper way in some areas where, not necessarily underground, but if you just redirected the water somewhere? Is there any potential for any of that anywhere?
Most everything is used up, I mean, that's, that's why it's so expensive right now that, you know, if, if you don't get it when the development's happening, the developer wants to use every inch he can for development and he doesn't, he doesn't leave any of the.
Yeah, I mean, pumping it a different direction, you know, even in the Croc thing, I don't know.
So if we, sure, I mean, if we proceeded on these ten, for example. So, if we, sure, I mean, if we proceeded on these ten, for example, we would hire, the next step is we'd hire an engineer. Engineer would then lay out options, which some of it might include combination service underground to help get that water out there. And so it's at that design stage where we start to look at the specifics of doing some of that.
I like those ten, those ten major areas is a great concept, because, you know, they're going to work backwards to some degree to find out why it got there, you know what I mean? And with the new design standards for the outline areas, and then with those ten that we concentrate on, that'll alleviate lots of problems. I mean, we're an arid area. It's not like we have to deal with this like Houston, which is the plus. But nevertheless, when it does damage, it does big damage, so.
And, and I may have not known where all the places were, but is the area in Shriners and Pasco and that area, Galbraith, is that touched by any of these ten? Because you know how when you run down, you go across Town Creek headed west, I guess, on Shriners Street, and you come up, that whole neighborhood is underwater in the roads. I mean, the water's up to the curb when there's halfway decent rain.
And Galbraith and Shriners?
But you go west on Shriners Street, cross Town Creek, and then all that neighborhood back up into the floods.
Yeah, and so by Blue Bell and all that area.
Yeah, in that area, but mostly right there, because it's like a, it's down from all spots.
It's a, it's a low spot. We, so there is a, go, as that water comes down off of that hill into that, into that lower area, we do have some drainage problems.
Yep.
Which would could be incorporated into this plan. Matter of fact, there was a drainage area that was made into a trail instead of a drainage area, and so now it really gets to scream down the trail and comes out at a
Galbraith.
I think it's like at the bottom of Galbraith.
Yeah, that sidewalk that comes down across Trinity.
Off the left there by Galbraith, yes, sir. So, yeah, those, that would be another.
Yeah, that, that neighborhood is, I mean, it's, water's to the curb, and it doesn't need to be a flood event.
Right.
And.
And that, that's a prime example of, of this development standard of how, in, in a drainage manual, how do you, how do you get that? Because that's a long way from really any, any water course.
Do we have a drainage design manual right now?
We do have a drainage design manual, but it, it's not far reaching. It, it basically, if, if I can relate it to water and sewer, it basically tells you like pipe sizes and how, what kind of pipes we want to use and that kind of stuff. It doesn't say, okay, overall, we want our drainage to do this. We want it to make it from the development all the way to the, to the creek. It tells you how to build different pieces of the, of the system.
Streets in that?
Streets.
Are streets part of that?
Not in the drainage design manual. There's another design manual that we have for, for sub, for streets and water and sewer, yes, sir.
I mean, if it was me giving direction, obviously, like the mayor said, nailing that down is something that needs to happen, but it's going to have to work parallel with this other stuff. Because, I mean, the design manual is necessary, but people are still going to wonder about the water that's flowing through their house. I don't know how you come up with a priority to these ten projects, though. That's a, a difficult call to make, because I assume they all can't happen at once. And so, or maybe they can, I don't know. I guess when you find out the cost, we do a huge bond election, but that's going to be, I don't want to be living in a neighborhood that's getting fixed. And then have the people that aren't getting fixed calling me and saying, what, you know, what kind of decision did you make there?
We just use the best information that we have, and then the, the way that I've been doing it is, is go back and find out what homes are in jeopardy, how many homes are in jeopardy.
Yeah.
If you have one that does four homes versus one home.
Right. So that priority decision is, is one, you could help us by lots of information coming out as to why the decisions are made and the order in which they're being made, so.
It may be a little inconvenience there at Wells Fargo, but it's not going into the buildings, but it is on Lower Street and maybe the others.
I had this idea to the, the desk person at one of my doctor's offices, and her reaction was not comforting, just because it's inconvenient. Yes, why? It's a terrible inconvenience, and it's all the time, it's on and on and on and on, she went, and I realized, oh, it's a little sore subject than I thought.
The people that it's actually getting in their house, they're, they're really, they go that way as well.
When I do, when it's raining, I just don't go that way.
Right. Thank you.
I, I, where's Park Street? I was just kind of curious on where that location is. Is that going into the back entrance in Shriners, crossing Coinland?
I'll get to it in a second, refresh my memory. There's a little map down there on the bottom right.
I think that's the one you're looking at, but this one.
I see B and C Street, and I guess that's.
Yeah, it's that one that goes into the back side of Shriners.
Okay.
And by the way, Texas Doc did say last time I met with Mike, that they would participate with us in that if we do our part, and the private property owner, however we work that out on Take It Easy, would do their part. But I didn't talk to him about Coronado, if there's anything they can participate with us there on. But anything that abuts their roadway, I want to make sure we have a conversation with them.
And, and I don't know how to, how to word this direction, but, you know, back to the original question about, you know, when do we take ownership and whatnot? Since clearly it's going to end up being the city's problem down the road anyways, if we could find a way to know that, and, you know, whatever it is, however you figure out a way to pass that off, whether it's washing our hands, you know, of trying to charge them up front, just knowing it's going to be ours, requiring them to build it a certain way, and then we'll pick up maintenance from day one, I, I don't know. But obviously, it's always going to end up coming back to the city, so we might as well just assume that upfront, right? I mean, development, I mean, the developers are going to disappear. We're going to end up taking this on at some point, right?
It's a policy decision.
Right, but I mean, that is what's, I mean, all, like, you're talking about Take It Easy. We're not going to turn our back on
No.
neighborhoods that are inundated with drainage just because their developer's gone, so we ought to plan for it.
And we're, and we're not going to be able to claim on the homeowners association.
Right.
Right, so it depends on the scope of the problem. I've been in communities where we're talking about, you know, three hundred million dollars to solve all of it.
Right.
And so that's just not going to happen, and, but as far, you're talking about upfront.
Yeah, I'm, I'm basically saying, yeah, so that, you know, we got new developments coming in. We know that the drains that they build, we want it to be specked out a certain way, but they're going to disappear.
So what cities would normally do on new development is they would have the dis, the standard that Stewart's talking about, and they'd have to take it, they'd build it and design it offsite as well to accommodate their portion of that water all the way to the next public drainage way, whatever that is, whether it's creek or drainage channel. And then they dedicate it to the city for maintenance.
Okay, yeah, basically.
Got one more question.
And then that's where that drainage fee comes in to maintain that drainage.
And, you know, it's important to think about our ETJ, too. I, I always think about River Hill Boulevard, because that's my neighborhood, and how many times it's been fixed in the eighteen years I've lived here. Because apparently, water, it's natural waterway. And finally, we have got the drainage under it, the, the storm sewer sized appropriately, so water can go down and go to the river. But, you know, that was all designed by a developer who was outside the city limits. You didn't have to follow anything. So we need to think about strategically, you know, where, where's our, what's going on in our ETJ? And, and do all the, all the regulation we can, so that when we inherit it, we don't have to rebuild it three times in twenty years.
It's a big ticket item, but I think that the, the drainage master plan is critical.
Right.
In, in looking at not only your existing problems, but potential future problems, and it can also help you with your, your policy standards or design standards on, you know, structures. So I know it's a big ticket item again, but in next year's budget, or maybe the budget after that, I don't know, but it all adds up, of course. But that's probably the first step to identifying and prioritizing the projects.
That's not, that's in addition to the citywide stormwater master plan, is that what you're saying? You're calling, or is it the three hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes, that's the one.
Okay. The, in your experience, the dollar per water customer idea that you floated here for utility fees for new development, is that met with, what are we talking about? Utility customers, twenty, twenty, how many?
Well, we have, we have ten thousand utility customers in the city, and so that would be, if it was a dollar, it'd be a dollar per customer per month, so.
In addition to the permitting fees and all of that, depending on the square footage that they pave?
Yeah, and it's not that simple. It's, I think you've alluded it to it, is you, you have to create a nexus between their impact to the drainage system and what you charge them. Otherwise, it's not legal. And so you look at impervious cover, or what most cities will do is look at land use, and there's service u- unit equivalents for different types of land uses. And then they, they develop charges, and then they'll cap it at a certain dollar amount. Some cities will do that study, and then just say, we're just going to charge a dollar, even though it doesn't cover their costs. And, but they still have to create that connection back to the impact that that property is having on the system. You can't just go out and charge a fee.
Right.
You mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that, before you put Phil in the flood plan, you had to have a study. What study's that?
So you have to have, you have to prove that you're not going to have an impact. It's a no impact or no RISE study, an H and H study. That's for FEMA.
So anybody don't want to do anything along a creek, would have to have that done for drainage?
According to FEMA's, if, if you do anything in their regulatory flood plan, then you're, you're supposed to be permitted. If you bring Phil into it, yes, you're supposed to do a study proving that your Phil will not impact the floodway. Or even removing material will not impact the floodway.
And are we responsible for enforcing that, or is FEMA?
Yes, we, that, that is enforced by the city of Curville.
So all these low water crossings, that would have to be, if we do, do something there, whatever the case may be?
Yes, there, there would have to be a study done with it, which they would do anyway, because they're going to actually look at the drainage area for those basins, figure out how much water, and then, then we get to decide, do we want to build it at a, a five-year event? Or twenty-five-year event, or a hundred-year event. All of that would be, all that would be in that study.
Okay.
So in your mind, Mr. McDaniel, do you, do you see us feeding this back to the Subcommittee and waiting for recommendations? And then mixing it with what we're presented to make a decision?
Well, it'd be both ways. I'll let them know, are your conversation and kind of the, the concerns that you all shared. And, and then on this page twenty-four, the different items that are kind of laid out there as, as possible implementation items and others that are in here. And lay them all out there as a menu for them to look at and ask questions about. And then ultimately, again, that comes to the Steering Committee, which you all are a part of, and, and then it'll make the implementation plan, or it won't. Or maybe it's just, you know, examine the feasibility of it is, is simply the action, so.
The chairman of the committee is very long for the drainage.
Do you have any comments or thoughts?
No, I think it's a great idea to do the, the master plan for drainage.
Overdue.
Overdue, yes.
I agree. All right, no more questions or comments. Thank you so much, Stewart, for that. This, I would like to take a break if nobody else does. Is that all right?
Cool.
At eleven forty-three, we'll take a break. Okay, I'm going to call us back into regular session at eleven forty-eight, and item number three on our agenda for discussion this morning is concerning zebra mussel prevention and education campaign. And Tara Bushnell from UGRA is going to tell us why this is important this morning.
Good morning. I put together a little information just to brief you on some life history characteristics of zebra mussels, and then why they can be a threat, both economically and to the environment. So we talk about zebra mussels and quagga mussels together often, because they're two similar species, both native to the Black and Caspian Sea drainages. They both invaded North America through the same mechanisms and have similar impacts, so we just kind of can lump them together in our discussion. We only have zebra mussels currently in Texas. So these are a small, here, I brought some, I brought some for you to look at. Right before lunch.
You know, flush them down the toilet.
These are not dead, they're dead. It is legal to transport live zebra mussels. So they're a small, you know, hard shell, bi-valve that is native to these drainages. They have become invasive in Europe. And they've spread to North America by shipping vessels. So the St. Lawrence Seaway connects the Atlantic Ocean all the way through the Great Lakes, through canal system. And when those big shipping vessels, they'll kind of pick up water where they come from, and they'll take water into their ballast when they're in Europe and Asia, and they come across the Atlantic. And they release that water when they get to port before they're loaded up. And so any, any living organism that's in that water is then released into the, the port water body. And they were first discovered in Lake St. Clair, which does connect to the Great Lake system in the US in the late eighties, and they have been spreading ever since. So our current distribution map, the black dots are zebra mussels, and the blue are quagga mussels. So currently, zebra mussels are the only ones found in Texas. The, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that quagga mussels won't be found here as well. They originally thought that zebra mussels would not spread to the southern US because of preference for colder waters, but we've seen them adapt to warmer waters as well. So within Texas, they were first discovered in two thousand and nine. Lake Texoma is right on the border of Texas and Oklahoma. And that was where, where they were first discovered, and then they have spread to our different water bodies throughout the state. So the red dots are infested water bodies, which means that they have a reproducing population of zebra mussels. And, I'm sorry, that's the purple dots. The red dots are positive lakes, where they found either larva or adults, but not necessarily signs of reproduction. And then orange are just kind of incidental observations. And then yellow is inconclusive. They might have found zebra mussel DNA in water samples, but not individuals yet.
Is that Canyon Lake, Tara?
I'm sorry?
Is that Canyon Lake?
Yes, so I, do I have a, I don't know, I don't think I have a way to laser point on there, but if you know where the Guadalupe River Basin is, it's kind of the tanish water body. It has one purple infested lake there, which is Canyon Lake.
Are that two counties east of Kirk County?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So Kirk County's the headwaters, the Guadalupe Basin, and everything that's in that shade is the rest of the basin. And that, the Canyon Lake population was just announced, discovered just this past summer, and it's already an infested lake. So you, zebra mussels are small, they're, you know, three quarters of an inch probably is the largest. They have that distinctive barring, black barring on them. You know, contrast them with quagga mussels are a little bit bigger. They're both distinctive, and they have that flat keel. Our native mussels don't have that shape. And the quagga mussels, again, are a little bit larger, a little bit lighter in color. So I don't think it's easy to mistake them for other, you know, hard shell species, but if you were to mistake them, might, maybe confuse them with the Asian clam, which is present throughout, you know, most freshwater bodies. They do have some impacts to the environment, but they don't have the impacts, they don't attach to hard surfaces like the zebra mussels do. So we don't see the threat to, you know, intake structures and things like that, that you do with the zebra mussels. And we also have slant, snails, and then native freshwater mussel populations throughout many Texas water bodies. So zebra mussel biology, they can spawn up to a million eggs a year, and then the larval stage lives free-floating in the water column for about one to two months. And they're called vellagers at that stage, and then they sink to the bottom, and then they'll, they'll look for something hard to attach to at that point. They, in lakes that are thermally stratified, meaning they're deep enough where you have a temperature gradient at the bottom, or kind of a, the thermocline is a, a division within a deeper water body where below that you have considerably colder temperatures and more oxygen depleted water. They can't live below that line. But we don't have any lakes in Kirk County that are deep enough to be stratified like that. So that's something that would limit which areas they could spread to. You know, Canyon Lake would be the only lake in the Guadalupe River that is deep enough to have a thermocline, but they don't live below that level. So for economic impacts, they, again, because your intake structures and pipelines are hard, hard surfaces, they can attach to those. Can increase pumping expenses because of additional friction of having those zebra mussels attached, I mean, increase your maintenance and repairs cost. So the, the values that I put there for retrofitting, that was this study in two thousand and five that was done in the Columbia River Basin on their hydro, on hydro plants specifically. So it looked at, I think, thirteen hydro plants and averaged what the cost would be to retrofit those with like zebra mussel anti-fouling infrastructure. So and I, the other study I found, it's quite old, it's from nineteen ninety-seven, so you'd think that cost is a bit low now. But that was an average among a hundred water plants, and that it was a, an expense of about forty-two thousand dollars a year for the additional maintenance because of, of zebra mussels. So they can, you know, impact your water plant by fouling your intake piping, your water process, processing infrastructure, increase maintenance costs. Even said degrade the flavor of the water because of decomposing mussel bodies in there as well. So for ecological impacts, you know, they're very, very efficient filter feeders. So they're going to decrease your free-floating plant, your plankton, and then your zooplankton, which are small, little animals. And you think, oh, that doesn't sound so bad. It's going to make, you know, make the lakes clearer. Isn't that a good thing? But your plankton is the base of your food chain, so when you decrease But your plankton is the base of your food chain. So when you decrease that amount, you're gonna decrease the availability of food for anything that is larger than that. So an example would be, Lake Texoma has a twenty million dollar a year striped bass sport fishery and, um, gizzard chad are the primary food of striped bass in that ecosystem and gizzard chad eat plankton. So if you knock out your plankton and your zooplankton levels, decrease the abundance of gizzard chad and then you decrease the size and the the quantity of your sport fishery population, which could have a big economic impact to that area. You know, just in general, talking about the ecology of of your your water body, you know, by increasing the clarity, it's gonna increase the area in which rooted plants can spread to. And so you could have more problems with invasive, with aquatic vegetation. They also can biomagnify pollutants like heavy metals because they're filter-feeding everything, so now they become kind of sinks for heavy metals. So anything that eats a zebra mussel, you know, is getting a higher dose of of possible contamination like that. Even though luckily our water bodies, we don't have an issue, you know, in our area with heavy metals, not having big industry upstream. And then when, they can also create dead zones as well, which are areas of decreased oxygen. And then we have a couple of freshwater mussel species that are currently being considered for endangered species status. We have two in the Guadalupe River Basin, the fat mucket and the Texas pimpleback. And because zebra mussels attach to hard structures, they can also attach to the shell of our native mussels and smother them, um, as well as be competing with them for food and habitat. So the recreational impacts, since zebra mussles attach to your boat motors and hulls and plug your water intake systems, they'll colonize on any hard surface like that. And in areas that are really infested, you know, you have a constant life cycle of your zebra mussels and as they die, the shells will wash up onto beaches. And I grew up in upstate New York and you don't really go to the lake without wearing water shoes ever because of zebra mussel shells on the shore. And then if you wanna get into the water, you know, it's very sharp to walk, um, on areas that have a big zebra mussel population.
I'm just curious, where's that picture taken on the bottom right?
I'm not sure where it is. I would, I would guess the northeast, probably, you know, Ohio or somewhere. So they're spread by boats, barges, recreational equipment, um, by attaching to a boat and then a boat being taken from one water body to another downstream flows. You know, obviously, we'll be looking downstream of Canyon Lake and the Guadalupe Basin to see if zebra mussels are gonna colonize those areas as well since they've been found in Canyon Lake. Water transfers, you know, an interesting thing about water management in Texas is that, um, Lake Texoma on the border of Oklahoma and Texas supplements water to the Trinity River Basin by an inter-basin transfer to Lake Levon at the headwaters of the Trinity. So zebra mussels were found in Lake Texoma and immediately found in Lake Levon because of that inter-basin transfer. And then they've spread throughout the whole Trinity Basin just by the downstream flows. Not to mention there's huge reservoirs on the Trinity River Basin that are recreationally used. So then boats going from those into our other basins is is how it's spread so quickly. Could be, you know, a small in, amount of zebra mussels being spread by, you know, fish or other animals, but that's not really our primary mechanism of spread. So overly, these are some exaggerated examples of zebra mussels attaching to, um, your boats. But it could be as subtle as, you know, one or two that have snuck into a a small part of the motor or in a corner somewhere. So you really have to inspect. It's not going to be as obvious as those previous pictures. Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and the USGS have a coordinated monitoring effort throughout Texas. But we also, you know, can do monitoring locally, something as simple as, you just want a hard structure essentially in your water body that you can pull up periodically and look at it and see if there's any evidence of those juvenile or adult zebra mussels attached to it. So we have a red house brick on a rope and we gave one to Grant Terry over at the water plant and he's gonna pull it up periodically and look at it. And we have some other of those also with Parks and Wildlife that we put out at the Ingram Boat Ramp and some other places throughout the county that we can, you know, at least monitor periodically to see. I, we were talking early, you know, during the break, like, once they're here, it's it's not really, you can't, there's nothing that you can add to the water, something you can put in the water to remove them from your water bodies once they're there.
What eats them, Tara? What eats them?
So since they're in, what's common to most invasive species is that they're not a a native prey item, whether it's a plant or whether it's an animal. You know, our animals are not adapted to eating them. Over time, in some of the other lakes in the northeast, you know, they have been, become a prey item for different fish, but nothing is gonna eat them, you know, naturally here that would say keep their population down.
So we could import the fish from the northeast?
Yeah, this. Probably not because they'd be cold water adapted fish and they wouldn't survive.
And listen, the deer eat everything. They don't like, they, they learn to eat everything. We gotta get them.
They could use a little extra calcium, maybe. I don't know. I I think, yeah, so that's not going to be an effective way to reduce their population by kind of waiting for a prey item to.
One of the good things is Grant hadn't found any on the bridge.
Right, yes. And and, you know, hopefully it'll be years and years.
You have the authority, right? Or who has the authority to say whether or not Ingram Lake, which is the only one that allows those boats to come in, um, can or cannot remain there?
That the boats can remain there?
Yeah, you know, they, they.
Yeah.
So it would be the county's decision whether they allow that or not. I mean, but obviously we have nobody there to inspect where boats.
Right, it's not like a a private marina where you have somebody that could, yeah. Okay, so some of the prevent education programs that Scott just mentioned, that, um, he contacted Parks and Wildlife Department to get some of these some custom advisory signs and put them up at several boat ramps that the city maintains as well as other public access points. And that you got some for the county as well and they have put them out too. Um, and then the city released a press release in November, just kind of starting to key the public into this topic and educate a little bit about a clean drain dry as the prevention mechanism if you're transferring a boat. Um, and we're gonna follow up with a press release in the next month or two that just reiterates those sentiments and sentiments and talks a little bit about, um, you know, things that we're doing to monitor. So the the statewide campaign that Texas Parks and Wildlife has, protect the lakes you love and then really hammering in the process of clean drain and dry when you, when you move your boat, uh, from one water body to the other. They even have some boat ramps with that spray painted, like in the picture in the bottom left-hand corner there. And they also have great outreach to marina owners to help them kind of be the the front lines looking, inspecting boats that are coming in and leaving their marina. Obviously, the marina owners have a great invested interest in that because their recreation, um, you know, of the of the water body that they're on can be impacted if it becomes infested with zebra mussels.
If they, if you dry the boat, that'll kill them.
Right, so they can live in a real, those, the larval, the vellager stage can live in a really small amount of water. So even if you've drained your bilge, for example, and you just have a little bit of residual water, they can still live. So there's, um, there's a website you can go to to estimate, you know, based on temperature and evaporation rates, like how long you need to dry, dry for in a very certain times of year, but about a week, um, to dry in between.
And then they'll die. What if you?
Let's be realistic, though.
Bleach, would bleach kill them?
Yeah, I would say so, yes.
We're, we're not likely gonna have boaters that are gonna go into the water on Saturday, pull their boat out and wait a week before they go in on Sunday, so.
If you're going into the same water body, this is if you're going from one body to another.
From Canyon to here, to Ingram, which happens a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
What does that mean on page nine? It's the law. What law is applicable?
So the Texas Administrative Code prohibits the transport of any, um, of zebra mussels and other, you know, illegal, mostly invasive species. So Parks and Wildlife can levy fines if you're found to transport zebra mussels. It's probably the, having the game warden out there, seeing a zebra mussel on your boat and giving you a ticket would be.
Which is very seldom, I would expect.
Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe it's happening more often in some of those infested lakes that they're really monitoring the boat ramps more. Um, the, there's also, the Texas Administrative Code has a regulation that all water must be drained from your boats before transport. There are some exceptions, you know, for emergency responders. Uh, if you're going from one boat ramp, uh, at a lake to another boat ramp, the same lake, you don't have to drain. And then if you're in a sport fish tournament, you know, you have to keep your water in your live well, so you don't have to drain in those cases.
Bottoms of canoes and things, would they attach there? Kayaks?
Yeah, it could, definitely. I think if you're out and kayaking during the, and you come and you leave and your boat is not stationary, you know, in the water body, I would say it's a, unless, well, I mean, the larva could attach, but it's going to be a sm, a low, yes, a lower risk. But just hosing that down, letting it dry before you go somewhere else, you know, when you get home, just having it, taking that extra step.
Are they attaching just as soon as they bump into the, I mean, is water flowing through, hits my boat, they're attached?
It could, I mean, it just, it depends on what your concentration of that larval is in your water body. If you have a little pocket of water in your kayak where that, that can hold standing water or something or in your boat, yeah, they could be in that.
So Ashley, do we inspect at the park? Maybe, maybe we could.
I don't think anybody inspects, uh, except on a spot check basis, Parks and Wildlife wants to serve the program.
So I just wanna acknowledge a great resource we have in the state level of Parks and Wildlife. Monica McGarrett is the Aquatic Invasive Species Team Leader and she, but she, um, gave me a lot of the information that we put into the talk as well.
That's terrible, I know.
We just have to find something in South America that likes to eat these things.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, otherwise, we're, we're looking at basically, this is just gonna, this is gonna happen eventually, just a matter of how long before it happens, right? Yeah.
And they're always small like that. That's another good recognition, your education program here. And they're kind of triangular shaped as opposed to
Right.
some of the other mussels.
Yes.
Well.
Well, just 'cause it might be a foregone, you know, conclusion, doesn't mean that, you know, you don't work hard to to prevent it from happening or to lengthen that.
Push back, right.
Yeah.
But t- tell me one more time about the temperatures they like to live in. Where?
Well, so now it, it was always thought, I don't know what the specific degrees are. I can look that up and get that for you. But it was thought more because that they would own, that they would kind of stick to the northern US because they preferred cooler water. But we found that them to be able to adapt to warmer water bodies, unfortunately. Um, but did you mean in relation to the thermocline? So like, deep lakes have a a level where the temperature drops below that level and there's also depleted levels of dissolved oxygen, so they don't live in those really deep parts. They would be above that.
I talked to Canyon Lake, Guadalupe, Flint River, it already has a water plant there. And there are two lower structures do not have infestation, but the upper one does. So those are some of the, if you are in, get an invasive, an invasion of them, that's one of the techniques you can do is to lower your your intake source. I don't know that we have that.
Probably, yeah, not really.
Rather shallow. Have you, have you addressed the, the county?
The Commissioner's Court, I, I believe that Charlie Hastings talked to them when they put the, um, signs out.
Yes, and I talked to Charlie. We got Charlie the signs and he's posted them at all the boat ramps and he's got some more printed and he's getting them at the low water crossings up in Ohio.
Okay, the comment for those listening is that there are signs, they can't hear you in here, there are signs on the county crossings and other places.
Well, isn't the county, who put the signs out, that's correct.
Thank you for, any other questions or comments? We'll keep an eye out. Thank you for the presentation. All right, uh, that is the end of our workshop then today. If there's no more questions on anything by council, then we will adjourn at twelve oh eight. Thank you all for coming.